Just trying to keep law.
Well, most of them.
Security and safety for all.
For the guns.
Did you see Rob Almatry in the lobby?
No.
You are to be disarmed when you walk in. If someone decides to come in illegally with a gun and slaughter all of you, the police will wait outside and commit.
With a mop and bucket afterwards. Does that understand?
My name is Tucson and I know what's going on.
You look like you're a boomer. You probably don't have a clue what's going on.
I'm just kidding, bro.
Hey, you're outnumbered by boomers.
Of course he is too.
Of course I am.
And you don't have a clue.
Think I was the last year of the boomers. Think it ended in what, sixty-three?
I don't know.
Think it was.
Thank you for your obedience and compliance, man. One person at a time. One person at a time.
Hey, and you're looking at the reason why there's one person at a time right there. He's the one.
You know, if all slaves would be disobedient, we wouldn't need whips. You all should pat yourselves on the back. Go ahead, say it. I'm a good slave. Hey, how's it going, sir? Good. I got an all-in-line for ya. Well, he'll need to get in line. No cutting, sir. Last comedy club. Thursday night's open-mic night. Tucson's most popular, longest-standing comedy club in Tucson. Don't you wish this was funny enough? Really? I didn't say anything that wasn't true. I just said it loud and obnoxiously. They say it quietly.
Come here making him do your job, man. What's up with that?
Look, you better cut it out. Criticism will not be accepted here. Thank the rest of you for your obedience, your compliance, and your silence. Good job, man. Search this one good. Want to get shots of you searching everybody? Through the window.
Hello, Larry.
People thought it was a joke.
What's going on, Larry?
If you look at what's going on here, it's not.
There ain't corpsman in action there.
You will be disarmed. You will be searched. We will go through your bags. We will go through your pockets.
Yep. Only the terrorists are allowed guns.
One at a time.
Boomer, are you a boomer too, friends and code? Hey, Chuck Ronson in the house. Surreal Camera, David S.
Thank you for your compliance, man. You're gonna need to let us search your bag.
Sorry, guys. I started this up in the wrong mode.
He asked if he needs to show his ID, and that's what we're looking for.
Obedience.
Don't just give what we ask for. Give more, okay? Do I need to show my ID? Do I need to drop my pants and show you my butthole? Now, that's the kind of stuff we want. Thank you all for your compliance. Got them all single file and everything, man.
One at a time. In Siamese twins, we got a saw right here. No exceptions to the rule.
You want to go interview the cops with me? I think everybody's, uh... I think everybody's in compliance.
Yeah.
So, guys, how are you? Mr. Pena? Thanks for your service, guys. It's, uh, summer on?
Is it good?
No, I got... Oh, really? Well, I appreciate you. Charity is caring, but not when you're safe. You guys ever watched some social experiments online before? You up now? You ever heard of Pilgrim's Obedience Study? Alright, well, thank you guys so much for keeping us safe. Hey, man. Looks like there's a spot on your boot.
Can I lick it?
Can I lick it clean? Hey, how you all doing today? Now you're coming late. Just so you know, the rules are though that nobody can be armed in here. Everybody has to be disarmed for government safety, okay? Everyone has to submit to searches and seizures if you have bags. As you can see, we're going to have people rummage through them. So, not only don't bring guns, but don't bring anything you might be embarrassed by, right? Bedroom toys, you know, I mean, you can, but it's gonna be searched. Alright, guys? One at a time. One at a time. Sorry! I didn't see. One at a time. I was supposed to prep you guys a little now. Um, I need you two feet apart from each other. Two feet. This is all for your government's safety. I don't feel uncomfortable. Quite frankly, we don't give a shit about your safety, but for the government. Thank you for your compliance. Hey, how you all doing?
Good.
Good. So, on the door, it says here, uh, no weapons are allowed in the building for government's safety. So, they're gonna search you. You got any bags or anything. They're gonna rummage through all your personal belongings. Which is easy to submit, complain, right? Do as you're told, and everything should work out just fine, right? You're just single file line, one person at a time. Go through. Understood? Thank you. Two feet apart, please. Thank you for your compliance, sir. Satan will reward you in hell. Not me, bro, that too. Well, you are. One at a time, man.
Yeah, we will in the end. I will. After everybody's in. Yep, you're first.
Did I say all the rules right? I didn't miss anything, did I? Oh, sir, for government's safety, you're gonna have to remove your firearm. Sir? Sir? This guy, oh my God, what are you, a sovereign citizen? It says no guns! What is wrong with you? Oh my God, we have lawless thugs among us.
And one at a time! They broke all the rules.
Huh, that's interesting. I mean, I thought there were rules, but it looks like maybe it's only for certain people and not for others, I guess? All men are created equal. We know what we mean. You going in?
I think so.
Alright, thank you so much, man.
That's what worked out.
I know, I'm sorry. I gotta get a...
I'm sorry about this.
Dude, thank you so much for doing that.
No worries. I only go up once, man.
My wonder will got a hold of it too if he dropped it. Oh shit, I probably flipped the mic like a motherfucker when I was yelling. Oh, okay. Cool, thank you, man.
You're coming in, ain't ya?
No, I'm not going past there. Thank you so much, dude.
Oh, fuck yeah, man. Any motherfucker does.
That's a... I think that'll be a great video, bro.
I really think it'll be a good video. There's some good fucking clips in there, man.
It's not over yet. Not everyone's in yet.
Yeah, fuck yeah.
Single file, obedient. I'm a little jumpy with your camera. I was like trying to stabilize myself and shit.
When you were saying that, they was backing up and they was doing it.
I know.
They're single filing, they're putting apart. They're just so compliant, sheep-like. It was fucking pathetic.
I think I should probably get out of here with the footage while I got it before then besides everyone charged me or something.
Hey! Is that a cop? Let's see. Oh, sorry, guys.
Watch the crack, watch it. Thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Calling you out, man.
Welcome to Tucson, sir. Thank you, sir. Hello. Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Alright.
Well, five forty-one. Follow the audience will be done, right?
Oh, yeah.
You guys going in?
Yeah, it's probably... It's too late to actually talk.
I mean, I'll go in real quick, get a few snapshots of Brandon Williams and Sax and whoever else you want.
Yep.
Oh, you fucking sneaky motherfucker!
Yeah. He texts me. He texts me and told me he's right behind us. I started this up the wrong way, guys, sorry.
That's gonna be a good fucking video.
I think so, man.
Get in line! Two feet apart, goddammit!
It don't matter, man. Six feet, two feet, one and a half feet. People just obey, man. I love to obey. Nobody wants to think for themselves. It's easy to disobey.
See somebody that they perceive as authority and they just follow.
I had a clipboard, bro.
I think there's more action out here.
How you doing today, sir? Good. As you can see, I have a clipboard here.
He's too busy.
You don't have any weapons on you, okay?
He's too busy.
That guy inside there tried to whack the fucking camera out of my hand with the door. See him do that?
No.
Yeah, I did. We're not. We're helping them. Did you see how disorderly these slaves' line was?
It lined right up, man.
They lined up and took their two-foot distance.
Hey, how you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good. For government's safety, we need to make sure that, uh, you're completely disarmed, okay? So, he's gonna check you. He's also gonna search your bag. Don't worry, uh, you know, it's for government's safety, okay? Should anything like Evolvi happen, don't matter. Don't worry about it. Plenty of mops and buckets to clean up afterwards, okay? Alright, thank you. Have a good one.
It's a clipboard, man.
Should something like Evolvi happen, plenty of mops and buckets to clean up. And she just... Okay.
Yeah, great. I'm glad. I'm glad I'm paying tax dollars to get them mop... Mops and buckets.
That's fucking hilarious.
Come on, strip down naked, Freeman. He won't search ya. Why start a search?
Seriously, I think I'm gonna go there and fuck take my pants off, man.
You gotta go through it?
I'm thinking about taking... Just to take my pants off, that's it.
And then come back down?
Yeah.
They might charge you now, you know?
Yeah.
For what? I've already riled them up.
You have shorts on?
I've got shorts on, man.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna see a dick, man. That's about it.
They've probably never seen one, right?
Yeah.
At least not in twenty years or so. Not their own.
Oh, fuck.
They've seen quite a few of them, bro.
They're coming out for us. Let's go, guys.
More action out here. More action out here anyway.
More action? Done already? Oh, got you. What happened? You get kicked out?
There's a car.
Did you criticize Regina? Why is everyone getting kicked out?
Yeah. We thought we was rowdy. We're supposed to be the rowdy ones. They won't let no one in that don't give up their Fourth Amendment. Let's go, guys. Alright, go take your pants off.
Yes. Yep, make sure you got no weapons on you. Only the government allowed weapons.
Glad to do your job, Freeman.
Thank you. Zip it, boomer. Before you strain a muscle.
A boomer coming out?
No. Tucker, you are?
Yeah. Yeah. On the retarded way. Sorry, guys.
So, that Vietnam War hat is a participation trophy? Yeah, that's fucking...
Hey!
Hey, how you doing today, sir? Couldn't be better.
Wait till you, uh... Wait till they find out you're why they have to do that, Freeman. Remember, that's where you stood the whole time.
Yeah. Now, there's only one person at a time allowed in.
Yeah. You and your daughter stood in there the whole time.
I got a good shot of a whole bunch of people standing right here in the lobby, though. They didn't allow that, right? The last couple of weeks?
Not with us, they won't.
Okay, good. So, I can make sure that, uh...
Think I should go in there and stand with them?
I think you should. Only certain people can stand there.
Alright. Blind justice, welcome in here. I think this is funner than going inside and saying stupid stuff to the mayor.
See, you guys should've stayed out here with me last time. I had fun the whole time, hour and a half, bro. You guys sat there and had me quiet.
Sheep.
Yeah. Fuck the slave shit, bro. Stand outside of the plantation just a little bit and yell at the slave. Back to working it!
What's up, Brian Johnson? Should I stop this and do it the other way, the correct way? Hey, Westside, Bill Wrights. Popeye Transparency.
I just... I feel bad. I couldn't stabilize as well as I should have.
It's tough. I gotta get a... My daughter is very good. I can't do this shit. Like phones have internal stabilization. This doesn't change it, but it is.
I was watching the video as I was going around. I was watching.
I got it stat... I got a static recording on the, uh... The right way, so...
I gotta, uh... Well, even with this, it's still hard.
It's a fucking workout, man. I mean, that's a heavy motherfucker. You don't have that tripod folded out like that?
No, it's almost over.
So, I mean, you can take stuff off in here, too. But if you're gonna be going, so you can get about an hour and a half of that, just from camera and stuff. Most of that extra weight is the audio setup, the lighting.
Sorry, guys.
You all have fun? Good. You enjoyed it? Is Regina in there? Romero? What is it? Rahina? Is that how you pronounce it? It's spelled Regina, though, isn't it?
Regina, yes. Some people say Regina.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's pronounced Regina.
Okay. I just kept hearing, uh... Was it Regina? Oh, okay. Okay, is she there?
No.
Oh, she's... Santa Cruz. Oh, okay. How's she doing? So, how's she doing? She looking fabulous. Maybe we work with them. What did you all do in there? Oh, what... Who did you pray to? Holy one? Okay, yeah, I was curious, because I'm... Yeah. So, a holy one is which? That's who you prayed to? I offered a prayer one time. Uh, I actually did it in public comments. They wouldn't want to do it. I prayed for Regina. Oh, are you? Yeah. So, you understand, like, uh, what is it in Kings? It says that we should be obedient to government or such? We're not kings. You don't know? I don't know either. Obedience to government? Right, right. Well, my... It's big for me, though, because my faith is... You know what I mean? And so... Like, that's why... You ever heard somebody come and speak to the council, and they're like, "We pray before you today"? Then you're praying. You're literally, you know, praying. You're asking someone who's above you for gifts, right? So, I went and I prayed for Regina. Recognized her as my God, my religion, and the one that I go to for my daily prayer. And I hope that... And I hope that everyone else can adopt my religion. And it's a worship of the state. Yeah, I think that's about it. I think we should force government. Folks like me are slowly gonna not just think that way, but force it on everybody, you know what I mean? Uh, did you pledge allegiance to the flag? That's what we need, swear. Swear in allegiance to the government. Or Lucifer, or whoever, you know? Really, one nation under...
And if not, I said at least, like, I said...
Silly me. Hey, alright. Hey, thank you all. Thank you!
Alright.
Hey, how you doing tonight, sir? Did you go in the meeting?
I did.
Good. Did you enjoy it? Good. Uh, did you see Regina Romero there today? It's my accent. Like, you sound like you have an accent. You know? I sound kinda lippy. I don't make fun of you. Right? It's just an accent. I don't make fun of yours, don't make fun of mine.
Mexican Free Press. Freeman, Mexican Free Press says, "Tell James Freeman I said what's up." Then he says, "Brother Roy, I says what's up."
This guy's making fun of my accent.
Don't make fun of Freeman's accent, guys in there. Everyone in the chat.
I didn't make fun of his list.
Yeah. And everyone in the chat, I want you to stand three feet apart and take all your weapons out of your pockets. Everyone in the chat.
Two feet.
Two feet, okay.
How are you supposed to obey if you can't even listen to orders?
Well, in the chat, they get three feet.
Oh, okay.
See, they're special. See, since you joined my chat, I'm giving you an extra foot.
Were you live when I was doing that?
Yeah.
Were you live?
I started in the middle of it.
Oh, okay. Good.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Or maybe... Yeah, I got... I got it on stagnant. A lot, yeah.
I was thrilled with the level of obedience.
Yeah. When there was a real big line, guys. There was probably about twenty people there, and he started yelling two feet apart. Then that crowd just whipped in order. Freeman had them going in order.
Right in line, bro. Two feet apart, single file.
One at a time.
One girl laughed, but I let her know. There will be, no... It looked like she was, like, criticizing me to her friend, quietly whispering, "Let her know, there will be no criticism."
I can't believe she'd do that. Some people got nerves.
Yeah. Didn't they see I have a clipboard?
If you're gonna give your Fourth Amendment rights up, you should give up the other rights to Freeman.
Yeah. They literally thought you were fucking charged.
Have you seen those social experiments? Okay, so I've seen one where this guy goes out with a clipboard and a lap coat and takes a cone, puts it in a spot on the sidewalk. That'll keep you walking around. Everyone awakes. It's because it's in our nature. Like, most people are good. We're good. Like, government wants you to believe that everyone is mean, nasty, dangerous. Most of us want to be good. And that's why we've been taught, well, a good thing to do is obey authority. Most of us do good already. And it's authority that gets people to do really horrible things that they would never actually do.
Like cops, like we're cops.
Right. And, and, you know, these aren't my... These aren't my social experiments that I did. I'm not the smart one who came up with it. You can look at, uh, Pilgrim's Obedience Study, though. Um, and then go look up those social experiments where somebody with either a lap cone or a clipboard just stands and tells people what to do.
Hey, Tommy Wood wants me to delete you out of my videos. All, um... Everyone, Tommy Wood?
And the point is, though, it's not that, oh, you're stupid.
Alright, Tommy Wood, you didn't say that.
It's human nature.
I made that up.
If you know what your nature is, then you can make a stop sometimes and be like, whoa, wait a second. Am I obeying this? Am I doing this because it's right? Or am I doing it because I perceived someone to be authority and they told me to do it?
Most of the time, it's the authority.
Authority said, "Do this..." This way.
It's instilled in you as a kid, ever since your first fucking grave.
Line up at the water fountain.
Stand in line. Single file. Up against the wall.
Two feet apart.
Don't touch anybody.
Arms length.
No, Aaron Queen ain't blocked.
Aaron Queen's blocked on my Facebook. I don't know if you're doing it, but he says he is. Probably just... He gets annoyed sometimes, probably.
You in here, Aaron Queen?
Seen one of those social experiments where they...
Aaron Queen can't be blocked. I made him a moderator. Just so he wouldn't get blocked. He can say what he wants. Hey! Hey, Aaron Queen only had... Or Freeman only had two moderators in the beginning. Tommy Wood and Aaron Queen.
Chili keeps trying to call me, man.
Chili? The Castro?
Yeah.
Talk to him, man. He's your buddy. He's your buddy. Casey Anthony Babysetting says Aaron Queen got me pregnant.
I saw it just now, and I was like, I should've just not told anyone.
Come on. There we go.
I need some of those, too.
I bet you Aaron Queen got, uh... Got Freeman pregnant, too. That's why he's mad at him. He's mad at him. But Casey Anthony Babysetting says Aaron Queen got me pregnant.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I don't know why. Just this little troll kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
Aaron Queen's a bowellicker?
No, and Aaron Queen trolls any... Everyone. He's got... He's got no... No, and Aaron Queen trolls any, everyone. He's got, he's got no, no boundaries yet. Right, and.
Is Aaron Queen in here?
Hopefully you got him blocked.
No, I didn't block him.
Tuck, you block Kevin.
No, I don't block nobody. I bet I made him a moderator so no one would block him.
Everyone blocks Aaron Queen.
And then he started blocking people for, and I didn't realize, he started blocking everybody.
Aaron Queen did?
Yes, he's, on my channel, he started blocking people for ten, yeah. Then I took him off a moderator for ten seconds, until I realized it was a ten second, because you can't even type faster than ten seconds. You know? Yeah.
Most of them probably are being blocked.
But that's why I took him. Not, not blocked, timed out, I mean.
Yeah, he's, he's.
Not blocked, timeout.
He's a tyrant.
Hey, where you going? The action's over here.
Huh?
Regina Romero's not even here, and you came to see her.
I know. I didn't really come to see her. I'm not going in there.
Well, she's not in there, so you. The first time we went, she wasn't there either. You ain't seen Aaron Queen in here, Cindy? Aaron isn't here. But no, he's not blocked. At the end of my last stream, I made him a moderator again, because I did stop him for about four times until I found out it was just ten seconds, but still. Come on.
Just, just block him.
Uh, we'll see what they're doing over here. Think they're staging on us over here. I don't know. Yep. They're staging on us right there, guys. They're getting ready to come out the door, see. Let's go, sir. Think I oughta go inside and get my butthole touched. Anyone wanna see the boring? Leaving?
I had a bunch of moderators I took along down, just someone I was doing, saying, "You're gonna be tough, rockin' that shit up my channel." I wanted one out. They're all gone now.
Who wants to go in there? If I go in there, I gotta be quiet. That ain't good. Who wants to, who wants to go in there and be quiet? There's a cop, I thought. Smelled barbecue. Tucson Peanuts County, Arizona, one of the worst places to live. Tuck, you won't tell him? I thought you were a cool dude. Tell who what? I think I missed that. I went, oh, tell James that he was calling me. Not delete laws. Oh, hey Freeman.
Yeah?
Wolverine Transparency said that he was calling you, not delete laws. Just as bad, right, Wolverine? He said it was him, yeah, he said it was him calling you.
Bullshit.
He's busy, can't you see?
Wolverine Transparency?
Yeah.
I don't think it was. Is delete laws in your chat right now?
No, Wolverine Transparency just came and said that. Delete laws is not in my chat. Is delete laws in here? Tell him I'm not. Be. Him. That was me. I don't know. He's not, oh, he's not bullshitting you. That was him, he said. Tell him to call back and I'll answer it right now.
Text me something to prove it's Wolfie.
Yeah, he said text him to the same number you just called.
Wolfie would know. That one time, in the bedroom.
Oh. Wolfie and Freeman. Wolverine and Freeman, I didn't know that about you. EWW. I know what EMAW is. Only the people from my town know that. That's the saying. Hey, if anyone can guess what that is? EMAW. Anyone in the chat knows what that is? EMAW. James Freeman is clean-cut now. Only on the outside.
About this? Oh, I could've turned it off. I could've turned it off. The bright blue?
It's not even on. See my new government rig from the VA? Yep. See, guys? I had surgery on my foot.
Does that come up on your video?
I took off my bloody sock. What's that? What's that?
I need to get one of these.
Okay. Yep.
Because my, that's how I set up my gimbal too, on that stick.
Yep. Oh, shit. Again. It's easy to go on, but hard to get off.
Yeah, I just don't have enough wide.
Yeah, this is the one, there was two sizes. I got the wide one. My old one was the short one.
I wish I had the stick that had the three legs, but wider ones.
Four legs.
Four legs?
Wouldn't work with three legs, it'd fall over. This.
I thought these came with the three legs, too.
Oh, no. I don't think so. Oh, a tripod, yeah. They don't come with a tripod, but you can screw one on there.
The only, the only reason I can see to even shoot an AK is so you can still crop, zoom in a hundred percent and still have 4K. So that afterwards, after, you know, editing.
Doing editing, can you zoom in, or does it have to be on the camera, actually?
No, yeah, zoom in. Oh, yeah. So from 4K, if I zoom in a hundred percent, it's still coming out. That's, and that was the only reason I could see to shoot 8K, so that I could still crop and zoom my gravy. Um, so, since then, there's been a number of social experiments done. Uh, where, there's one where this guy stands with a clipboard and a, uh, medical jack. I think he's alive. He's, yeah, nobody watches this channel, but I'm there.
My mom and my sister, get it right. My sister watches every time.
Um, yeah, this guy stands with a, with a clipboard and a, and a lapel, right? Puts a cone on the sidewalk and tells everybody, "Right."
Hey, Mom, you in here?
My goal, my, my role here was to report how obedient people are. It's, it's, it's meant to be education. And it may not be educational of all the people who sit in line, but exactly what I told them to do. But, you know, besides that, it was also paying attention to something that they don't really, they, they do really.
Hi, Mom.
Everything I said was true. If we have had multiple people arrested here for saying things that are perfectly legal to say and do, a public comment, and Regina Romero had been moved physically by guys with guns, and when they didn't, we only want to leave, the guys with guns were physically harmed by, and made them. Everything I'm saying, you do have to be disarmed. It is for government's safety, right? So everything I'm saying is true. It was just that they see it in such a.
Come on, Mom, say something.
You know, turning the water up on the crawl slope, bringing up the boiling water. So I just, my goal was to just create.
Thanks for following the rules, guys. We appreciate obedience.
The truth is, you're little, and I don't do a damn thing here. I won't. But I assure you, Paul. We've got video evidence over the last year or so, of that film.
Jonathan, do you need to take a picture still? Come on.
Sorry, guys. Hey, thanks for, thanks for being in our little, uh, social experiment. Thanks for your obedience.
I already told him that. I told him that. Thanks for your obedience as they walked out. I noticed that was the most obedient group, except for that blonde. Yeah, that's the blonde. Yeah.
Oh, is that the girl that was laughing at me?
Think it was.
Now, she was really my favorite, but my role was an authoritarian. I had to stay in character, bro. But she, she did not respect my authority. She's one of the good ones.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, exactly. She knew there was something.
So you had a good seat over there, huh?
Yeah, the sniper's fucking post.
If what? Yeah, if he was mic'd up and we all got arrested, that'd be great. They couldn't, they couldn't get your camera. They wouldn't even know you was there. You would've got the whole thing.
We got somebody on our six with a cyber phone on their hand.
That's what you, that's what you need, that 600 millimeter zoom lens.
We need to get someone. We need to get someone on the roof.
Right.
Wanna hear a funny story?
That 600 millimeter's only about two grand.
Wanna hear a funny story? After I was, uh, beat up by Tucson Police in 1993, we got the job for this. So we closed this whole street off with two cranes, and we set all the cooling towers on the top of that building. That's where all the equipment is. And one of the guys up there brought his girlfriend from, uh, I don't, anyway, that's a long story. Anyway, he brought his girlfriend, she was up there smoking. And we had these gallon-sized things of PVC, uh, cleaner. She kicked it over, threw the thing on it, fire went up. It flamed up, all in that, it was all cement, but it flamed up. And, and I had to take everything I had to put it out. But his girlfriend had a cigarette, just threw it down and, pff, lit, almost lit up there on the top. 1999.
Thanks for laughing at that bullshit. You're the winner. Thanks for being disobedient.
Do as the masters say.
Nobody wants to talk, Freeman.
Nope.
He's gonna giggle and walk away.
Hey, how you doing today?
All right, thank you.
Good, nice piece of cleta.
Second?
Nice piece of cleta.
Oh, thank you.
Can I take it for a spin?
Second?
Can I take it for a spin?
Nah, I'm just trying to get in there right now, actually.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're going into the meeting?
Yes, sir.
We just gotta make sure you're get on.
Yeah?
Yeah, you don't have any weapons on you, do you?
Uh, no.
Okay, good. For your government's sake, you gotta make sure that you don't have any weapons on you.
Of course.
Okay. Appreciate your compliance. Government safety is number one, right?
Sure.
You ever used that piece of cleta as a weapon before?
What do you mean by cleta?
Piece of cleta, it's Espanol for, uh, bicycle.
Where are you in?
Um, I am with my wife since 2015.
Okay, uh, can I ask that my, uh, license is not used?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. You've ever used the bike as a weapon before? You planning to today?
Where is this line questioning going?
I'm just trying to make sure you're not going to try to use that bike as a weapon.
Okay. No?
No? You sure? You seem a little hesitant.
I'm just wondering where this line questioning is going.
I don't think it's.
It's really, I don't need a light to somewhere.
I can all ask the question. Okay. You intending to use that as a weapon?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't know if I believe you.
Okay.
It's pretty dangerous to me. What's that thing weigh?
Um, I don't know, off the top of my head. Maybe it's filled up?
Maybe steel? That's right? You were doing those handlebars?
Ooh.
Yeah, that's gonna hurt somebody pretty bad.
Okay.
It's almost like it hangs.
I'm just looking out for, you know, the safety of my fellow men.
I think that is an unlawful thing to do.
And by my fellow men, I mean my government.
Okay.
I don't really care about the rest of you.
Okay.
Pineapple, is that you, Aaron Queen? I know that's you. Was that? No, someone came on his pineapple. I just made him a moderator. Aaron Queen always makes fun of my pineapple. Says that I took a plastic pineapple and glued it on the plant. Remember, when I used to have? It only grows one pineapple. It's all I ever grow.
Right.
Grows one, and then that's it. Then there's some other plant for other pineapples, but I can't blow it some pineapple. Yep, he's a witch. Okay, pineapple, you're not.
You don't work here.
Pine, pineapple express, yes.
I don't have to work here to tell you the rules.
I grow pineapple express.
Rules is rules whether I work here or not. That guy looked nefarious to me. What do you guys think?
Yep. He's getting searched real good.
This one's butthole. You got teeth on wheels. I think he's hiding a cell phone.
Check his asshole. Did you get any of the audio of that fucking weirdo that was having?
Oh, hey, I was gonna bring him.
I had the camera on, so. I didn't have the mic on, though. So, let's see what the, the camera.
I've got, I've got side here. I want to see your finger tool.
Hey.
I mean, to be totally honest, I would love to have every one of us had a camera period. Not, and not even a recorder itself, but everyone else got a camera person, too, to record each one of us while we do a video.
Instead of holding the camera like this, you can actually be fucking normal, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna mute this for a second. Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, yeah, it'd be, that would be nothing...
That would actually probably get some, I know these little bastards that they keep looking, but I know they're talking...
No, let's do it next time, but next time...
I meant next time, not now.
Okay, yeah, next time be the first one in line, though.
Yeah.
So that we can get audio of everybody that's...
Everything that they say in there, everything that goes on there, that is absolutely genius.
He takes a... Even, even, I went in there with all my stuff in my briefcase, and they took out my bottle of water. They won't let bottled water in there. So, they won't let a cooler full of water. With the thing on it. With a cockroach in it. Was that?
Just bring a bicycle. Hey, I mean, he gets, bring his bike in there. Everyone else has to leave theirs out here.
His folded up.
He has a weapon.
You'd have to fold that up with a chainsaw.
It is a weapon and can't be left there for government's sake.
See the way those handlebars chopped down like that?
Lirada, lirada. Welcome in, Phil.
Yeah, it would be awesome if every time we went out, we had a camera crew. And we just did what we do, and everything's in 4K.
And everything is mic'd up everywhere. You get good audio, you get good video.
This is more than 4K, isn't it?
And each video would only, each town hall meeting would only cost like 10 grand to shoot, you know? Not even including the equipment, just the people that run it.
It's expensive, but, you know, fuck, you got family that was like, you got your daughter?
Yeah.
You got your wife, your boy. You want to come work your toe tag in your bag?
Make toe tags, my wife's a board.
So, hey...
Your wife's a board.
Freeman, you see where they put his bike?
Yeah.
Right there?
Yeah.
Where your daughter was standing.
Right.
I know, man, and that audio, I've got, I think it's even coming out, asking them questions, looking around the corner.
Yeah.
Entire time we're here.
Yeah.
So, if we're out here causing a ruckus in that line, you know, right there, they're gonna say...
And that we wouldn't do live, because then they would get it.
No, I know. I don't do that live. Just have the audio, but still record out here, the whole thing out here, just do it.
Like I said, I'll do it with a cooler, a cooler of water. They won't let it in. They'll just set it right there until I come out.
Just fucking punch your bugger in on the side of it?
Yeah, 'cause I came out here, and I forgot to ask, uh, Larry's the one that took it, you know, Larry's the guy that pulled Anthony down, Cornman, that pulled Anthony down by the hair. Anyway, Larry, I came out here, and then Larry come running out, 'cause I came out the back door and said, "Oh, here's your water." And then the other guy go, "Hey, why didn't he bring me water? Why come you're so special?" I had a little water boy run out and hand me a cold, cold bottle of water. There you go. They won't.
You don't think they'll bring me, they did the last time I sat there and talked shit to them the whole time?
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the, the guy who sits in the back is really chill.
That's Larry Cornman, the guy that grabbed Anthony by the hair and poured it on the ground.
Oh, he's being chilled now.
He used to work, he's the guy that was at the city, uh, court.
You know, the thing is, most people, people are chill. We just talked about it, right? Good people do bad things 'cause they, they believe in authority.
Order followers.
Hello? Testies? Testies? Testies, testies, one, two, three. Testies? Hello?
Welcome in, James Snow.
Hey, that's... Now, that's the way the cookie crumbles. Testies? There you go. Testies, testies, one, two, three. Bring your mic down a little bit. Testies, testies, yeah, now I can yell, and it doesn't clip!
I don't think it was clipping when you yelled.
Are you sure? I don't know, man. It looks like it's clipping.
It's pretty crisp, man, you hear that?
Sweet! Maybe I wasn't yelling as loud as I thought I was. I was just doing my job. Self-appointed job.
Just doing my job.
There's about half the people here that are usually here too. Because the mayor ain't here.
Come on, coming through. I'm gonna leave this shut, letting the AC out. Not allowed to stand right here in here, right? Okay. Thank you, man, I appreciate it. All right, thank you. Hey, it's good to see you again. I came late. I was gonna bring you both here, but I came late. So, anyways, next time, all right? You guys like Panda Express? No, what do you like? Burgers? You eat no fast food at all, so life needs to make a home-cooked meal? Spaghetti, spaghetti, lasagna? Yeah? All right, yeah, you can't say no to spaghetti or lasagna, right? Spaghetti's a lot, lasagna, it's less messy. All right, guys.
Freeman got some free water. They spiked it. I'm gonna watch. I'm gonna see what they put in there by how many seconds he stands up.
I, I really, I really did wanna bring him food, because I want him to know, I don't hate the person, I hate the actions. I hate the actions of...
Yeah. I'm gonna get him back, 'cause they spiked your water.
That's right. It's not you that I hate, it's the idea that you should obey authority. No, I fucking hate you.
Drink anymore of that water, you're gonna end up laying over there in that fucking pinch.
Yep.
Hell, yeah. Turn a different gun to water.
Yep. They put Viagra in that water. He's gonna have to run over and find himself a, a Ho-Ho.
Saw him use Freeman on Viagra. He's a giant dick, he'll just get taller. When's your court, Tuck?
Uh, the, uh, 28th, at 8:30.
That's at, uh, 2:30.
Everybody wanna come? I have court on the 28th at, uh, 8:30 in the morning. For Assault and Mary Jane.
When, 28th?
28th at 8:30 in the morning. It's Tucson City Court.
Oh, boy.
This is another repeat of the hogtie incident. This is the same place, same time.
But you're gonna have to move to a different court, right?
But a tribe, this is the, uh, this is the initial arraignment when they, but I'm gonna go in and 122H's the whole thing, and they always hate that.
I'm gonna 122H's the whole thing. I like how you put that, bro.
Yep. I am gonna 122H's their asses.
Sounds like you're gonna shoot the place up.
Yeah.
122H means broadcast everything that piece of shit guy in the robe says.
He's gonna shoot it up in 30 frames per second. 60 or 30?
It's just audio.
Oh, just audio?
Yeah. 122H's is just audio. Audio broadcasting.
Yeah, everybody's gonna be broadcasting.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be broadcasting.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your obedience.
She didn't care, Freeman.
Your reward is waiting for you in hell.
A glass of ice water? My dad always said, "People in hell don't get ice water." I don't know what that means. When you ask for water. People in hell don't get ice water. Well, I'm not in hell yet. Give me some fucking water.
I, I think you lie for it. I think there's water. So, in a couple of weeks, I'll be able to order the rest of the, uh, little stuff that I need, like a proper tripod and, um...
Think I, I probably should go in there just to see if Saks is in there.
So, I wanna get a gimbal too.
Huh?
Yeah.
Gimbal, the whole thing?
It's still hidden, but they've got great gimbals, where basically you can drop one side on your...
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that too, where it's got, it's got a little rod and clip into your belt or something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like clips in, so you just kinda hold it. Get yourself...
Then you can get a steady shot and not have too much weight.
But then they've got those motherfuckers that are like, you know, the care, the baby carrying you back.
Yeah, Mary Jane was trying to twist my arm. She says I assaulted her.
Action-packed, that shit.
Yeah, over the...
She took three charges on me.
So, like, using camcorders and always going back to a cellphone. Quick, easy. But after seeing the footage, I get out of this, I'm like...
Yeah, documentaries and shit you're doing, all that.
Oh, thanks, 5150 famous. $4.99.
YouTube pushes that stuff much too.
Exactly. Absolutely.
Where, uh, there. Hey!
Alan?
Did you enjoy it?
Yeah, man.
Good? Hey, guys? Did you enjoy yourselves? Oh, really? Hey, thank you, man. Make sure you're compliant. No boot left unlicked.
Are you live?
Yeah, no. I'm recording.
Oh.
See that little red light right there?
Yeah.
This thing has red lights all over it when the recording is on.
Oh.
From the top and on that.
Thought somebody said, "No boots left unlicked."
I did.
Licked. You did, yeah.
No boots left unlicked. He was in the booth.
On the 18th, on the 18th at 8:30. 8:30 in the morning at Tucson City Court, that's West Side.
I love the Second Amendment. You ain't never taken my guns. Oh, officer, you need my gun? Here, do you wanna fuck...
Hey, West Side, was you there that day? Wasn't you outside when they did that? I think you and Press Harder was on, on the outside of that. If I remember right, or maybe that was a different time.
Thank you for your compliance and obedience. You will be rewarded in hell.
We all should go in now.
I like Freeman's idea. We wait out back for all these pigs to leave.
Yeah, well, they go out, they go out the other door.
Oh, polish that boot.
All right, that's it, I'm going.
Did you see the video of me and Bao that I, from like eight years ago, that I just published, where this big old lady, missing half of her teeth, is like, "You better not hold your finger in the face, bro, caught sideways."
Yeah. Voting, yeah, it is, yeah. I did that a couple days ago.
There were so many epic thumbnails.
Johnny Bravo.
That ends up on the internet. I gotta put just a few seconds of that everywhere.
Yep, Kangaroo Court, 8:30. 8:30 on, uh, the 28th of this month.
All over the internet.
Yeah, voting. I wonder why you can't, I wonder why they don't allow, uh... Well, they just don't like filming, that's why.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, good.
Hey, what's up? Uh, just catching all the characters coming through. What's, uh, what, what are you on?
Um, well, I spoke, at, 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 during the call to audience, I spoke in favor of a public takeover.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, I worked for that.
Public takeover of T U T?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, public will run it?
Yeah.
Nice.
Yes.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, so, put, put Tucson Ranch in the democratic socialist America.
Democratic Socialists of America.
Oh, sorry, wow.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Where you from?
Uh, well...
What?
The other side.
Uh, mostly China. Um, but I've been here in Tucson for a few months.
Oh, but who are you working for?
Um, well, mostly Bao.
Bao?
Yeah, Bao. Uh, he's, uh, he's the boss.
Mao?
Bao, B-A-O.
Oh, okay, I first thought you said Bao, I was like, no.
Yeah, B-A-O, Bao.
Yeah, Bao, yeah.
Yeah, it's pronounced Bao. Like, it's, it's pronounced like B-O-W.
Yeah, B-O, yeah, Bao.
And, and he's my boss.
That's cool.
And I kinda just do whatever he tells me to do, so...
That's good.
Yeah, man.
Have a good day.
All right.
Yep. You ever go on YouTube?
Sometimes.
Go to Tucson Police Suck.
Talk to him, he's a democratic socialist.
Go to Tucson Police Suck.
Okay, I will.
On YouTube.
Oh, I will.
Yep.
Democratic Socialist?
But I agree with you. I agree with you about the, uh, public takeover of Tucson Police. Can't go wrong with that.
I think he said Tucson Power.
Yeah, T-B-T-E-P.
Oh! Oh, gotcha!
And then he said the city's taking it over.
Yes.
He didn't say public, he said public in the beginning.
No, yeah, that's, he thinks, he thinks the government is the people.
Yeah, I thought he meant TPD.
Actually, I shouldn't have said that, 'cause I think he is a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you cut that out of your livestream, please? Sometimes shit falls out of my mouth.
I didn't hear it. Say it again. Say it again, and I'll make sure I catch it and cut it out.
And it'll be somewhere.
I got a really good video that would fucking hit somewhere, bro. I wouldn't give it to anybody. Only Freeman, I said it's Freeman. Remember that Circle K incident?
Oh, shoot.
Oh, that guy that threw him out?
Yeah.
Yeah. He wouldn't let you use the bathroom?
Yeah. Well, it wasn't just that, like, it was...
How rude he was.
Yeah.
Hey, the criminals are over here! What are you doing?
Hey! How's it going, man? Good to see you. Always good to see you.
Likes more than your boots, buddy.
You don't like licking the back of the boots? Just the front?
I'll lick any of it, bro.
Just whichever part's easiest to access, mostly. How you all doing, Danny? I think you're late. No?
Fortunately not.
Oh, bummer. All right, I need to actually go up two steps higher to film stuff. Oh, no, one at a time! Oh! You're going to heaven.
Bring religion in this bitch.
Motherfucker looks like Humpty Dumpty right there.
Yeah, he's a trip, he's a trip.
That is a Humpty Dumpty ass motherfucker.
He said T-E-P, they, that's right, 'cause they're, they're trying to do that.
Can I get a shot of you sitting there, man? Yeah. I was just gonna test up for my Saturday sixties for the public power check. Oh, you're taking a senior's? Yeah. Well, I'd love your book, man. I can tell if you're a leather comb. Yeah. Or like a. But I don't want it for a, uh.
It's unique.
I'm right now. Yeah, I'm not right. I'm getting murdered today. About four years ago, the money was right there. I guess you thought it was wrong, you uh. Yeah, I'm in Detroit with your, your wife. I was, I was like forty-three, sorry, I'm forty. Oh, you tried to get fucked. I heard you fucking. I haven't tried it. Do you have respect, bro? And that's your phone number?
You're totally trying to get pussy.
Well, uh, in place of a business card?
Motorcycle.
Motorcycle, you already knew?
No, I didn't. You have, you have another one?
I got one for you, yeah.
I got three motorcycles.
Oh, hit me up, yeah.
Hey, I got a nineteen, uh, I got a nineteen eighty-two Kawasaki uh, two-fifty.
Yeah.
One of the ones that was the best uh, the ga, handling one.
Yeah.
And I need to be done. Friend of mine, was a friend of mine's cycle, same size as me, and he died. So, I wanna get it redone, cause uh, yeah, it's a Kawasaki.
Yeah.
KZ, KZ, they go on off. Cool. Yep, I sure will. I'd love to get that one going.
Watching your guys live, you guys have been uh, a source of inspiration, I don't know, but I have uh, learned so much.
Yeah, watching, oh, watch Tucson Police Suck? Yeah, that's my channel.
Nice to meet you, Kenny.
Yep. That's me, you're live, you're live with me.
Oh, cool. See?
Hey, that's me.
That's why you're watching.
Oh, cool.
So if I point on you, you'll see yourself there. Probably about, tell me how long the delay is, probably five seconds.
Wait for it, wait for it, still like, yeah.
No, I showed it and then I come back. So yeah, fifteen, maybe twenty seconds.
Yeah.
Let's see when I go solid on you. Yep, now I'm solid on you. So yeah, shit, twenty-five seconds, baby.
That's great.
Delayed.
Yeah, I do uh, all kinds of motorcycle stuff, so uh, motorcycles, ATVs, like that.
Cause I got a, I got a couple, the other guys I go with, and we're gonna start doing uh, uh, cop watching on bikes. We all get, doing bikes.
Yeah, I almost rode the bike, my bike down here just cause it's easier to get around downtown. Yeah.
Cause I got uh, on my bike, I got them uh, see the other thing I got on there, the little clips that you put up to there? I got them on my handlebar.
Handlebar clips, yeah.
Yeah, so I can put, I can go live on my bike.
What side of town are you on?
I, my bike is a six-fifty, XL six-fifty. I'm way west.
Way west, okay, I'm way east, I'm at the bottom of Melvin.
Okay, yep, in that area.
Well, I'm a mobile dude, so whatever.
Yeah, I'm way west. I got, my other one runs great, cause I have an XL six-fifty.
Yeah.
XR six-fifty L.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good bike. I have a, a CRF two-fifty L.
Yeah.
I just did uh, I just did, I just put a case in a bike today. I'll, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, you're good. I'm just, yeah, hey, you're good. What's that?
This is what TPD's doing in there right now, around the corner in that room.
Uh-huh. Are you watching it live?
He's playing solitary. I just filmed him right on the corner, he doesn't, he doesn't know I'm looking at him.
Okay, cause they are doing this thing live. You can watch it on the.
Right, 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 no, he's right next to the door here. I'm gonna go see if he pulls up some.
If Sacks is in there, I would go in there, but since the mayor's not there, I bet you that everyone's there. Playing solitary.
I got him.
See you yet?
Yeah, he's, he's looked at me and dove around the corner, watch him, watch him.
Did you guys see him? You guys see him? There's nothing funny about his truth. That's not my truth, come on the street, out of my mouth, no. Now, that was funny. Utah Cop Watch. Our guy's nine thirty-six.
Ah, fuck, I'm tired.
Oh, gosh.
I had no intention whatsoever, you know.
Yep.
They did put both for class on the entire building.
And, and they barricaded the whole building. They, they spent ten thousand dollars barricading the whole thing and everything.
Damn.
And nobody showed up. But a bunch of people was saying that. A bunch of people was saying.
And he's live right now. Yeah, but it's just tuck, TUC. He needs to change it to Tucson, cause it just confuses people.
Well.
He's a democratic socialist, you can tell him.
My email is Tucson Police Suck, but when you went to do the YouTube channel, they wouldn't let me put that much.
Well, you couldn't put that.
So they put it to tuck. They did it.
Can you change it now?
No, they wouldn't let me put it in there.
Oh, crap. I seen why. Too long?
I don't know why, but they wouldn't let me do it. Maybe it was already. It worked on my email though, so that's my email address, it's Tucson Police Suck.
See, he's live right now. You're, you're live. Fuck, you're live for me, bro.
Pigs Under Pressure. You heard of Pigs Under Pressure?
Oh, that's you? Okay, cool, dope, yeah. I, I was watching your guys live right now, and I. Scoot over here from that lumber real quick.
Oh, okay. Thought you, you didn't go inside?
No, no, KCD is live, and you guys are live, maybe, I don't know, a week or so.
Yeah.
Mobile motorcycle mechanics.
Mobile motorcycle?
Yeah, yes.
Mobile motorcycles, or did you work on like their bikes?
I can fix whatever, so motorcycle, uh, I just put a piece in a, a twenty thirteen CRF two-fifty L today. Uh, so I do like a lot of side-by-sides, generators on RVs, quads, I could fix whatever. It's just uh, some stuff I'll turn down, like if it's like, hey, I got a, you know, a truck that needs a big job, like.
Right, right. Head gasket on a fucking diesel six-six or something.
Not for me, nah.
I'm with him on that. No dual overhead cambo.
Yeah, 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 well, a lot of sport bikes are.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But, but bigger.
More simple.
Yeah, yeah.
Mine docks up and fucking.
You know, yeah, that's it.
Absolutely. This is fucking hilarious, man.
Yeah, no, I seen you.
It was really bad before I started.
Yeah?
Yeah, it was going on before I started. I, I was laughing so hard I had to start the live. Cause he was doing it. He snapped it right in the. Like they was facing trade.
Yeah, dude, he's fucking complying. He's missing out on his, everybody leaving right now.
Freeman's gonna go get in line.
Are you guys all democratic socialists? Everybody? Say communism. Everybody say communism.
Alright, see ya.
That'd be a good trade.
Stop trying to act like a democratic communist, you son of a.
It's community property, bro, shut up.
Alright, 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 sorry. I meant democratic socialist. Did I say communist? What was that?
Green Regina didn't even show up unless you go.
Yeah, that figures. There's some good ones coming out of this one.
Alright, it's trying to surround us, guys. TPD trick. That guy ran away. I've been chasing him around all night. Oops. Sorry, guys.
It's been pretty chill. Usually I make a bat once we come down, but it's pretty chill, bro. Hey, can you walk towards me? I really need like a still, I need like a thumbnail. Very hard to get a steady shot while I'm walking, I guess.
Alright, I got it, I got it. You know how to do it.
I'm just trying to get a thumbnail, you're walking, bro.
I got it for you. I'll send it to you. Get the one behind you. It'll get.
Formal photographer. Hit it from the wrong direction. But we need you to block these, you know, movement for, well, we need to. Oh my god, I'm like, I'm being. I know, not even in the corral. I don't know if you're. It's like herding pigs in a corral, man.
Where?
I don't think so. Do a short.
He's still in there.
Boomer's still in there?
So once, you want me to put you on the list and when we go out to give you a call, I got your number. Cop watching, you go cop watching?
No, I have never been.
Would you though, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes we just have three or so, or sometimes we run two or three cars, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would love that.
Like I said, you have a cycle?
Bike, oh yeah, I got a bike, got a truck, yeah, motorcycle, got a truck, yeah.
So when we do the, you might join us when we do the motorcycle one?
Sure, absolutely.
About five of us have it so far.
Well, so I'm gonna be going, I live in Alaska, Illinois, and I leave at the end of this month, go to Alaska.
So next year.
Till uh, about October.
Yep, we'll be back next year.
Okay, cool.
Yep, I know, I, I know I have a few friends that do that, because you have to be back, you have to be there at least six months or you don't get to get the money from the.
Oh, yeah, you do, yeah, that's true. I, I'm trying to escape the heat, really.
Yeah, but, but people do that, they come out here and then they go back.
Get the dividends.
So they get the dividends.
Yeah.
You go right, cause you have to be there at least six months or something like that.
Yeah.
Whatever it is. I had a friend that always come out exactly that time and then goes back.
That's funny, yeah. I was like, I don't know if I'm dry sleeping if I film or.
Where's this at?
So the pigs wanted to go in there and film forever, that's right. And were you live? Russian? Tuck, were you live in that motorcycle gathering on Parkland Streetway?
No.
You weren't live there?
No.
But you did post that video, though.
Yes, afterwards. Yeah, after the fact, next day.
But I'm sure they can take that content from you, they can upload it as evidence against those bikers.
But no, because.
They were looking for somebody specific.
Nobody had tags and everyone had, that I went, had a helmet on. You couldn't see nothing.
That's good shit. I love it.
Oh, you saw all the. Was that?
What a nice group of people.
Yeah, I didn't mind them.
All, all masked up with no tags, no license.
Yep.
Fuck, yeah.
The ones with tags stayed.
They look like sovereign citizens, man.
Yeah, fuck, yeah. That registration's some shit like my tow truck, man. It's eleven hundred dollars a year, and the fine one's eight hundred, motherfucker, I'm gonna pay the registration, fuck it, today.
That's a gamble worth gambling, as long as you don't get caught more than twenty years.
Right, exactly.
Go inside, it's over. There that guy runs. Bullshit. So, Freeman, that pinia guy you saw? He's, he was, he's a dickhead, that pinia guy. He was at, he was at city court one time.
Oh, yeah?
Trying to enforce that on us.
Did he want twenty-two H U?
No, he, uh, he, he said that he was gonna arrest me if I didn't stop recording. I had to ask him about fifteen to twenty times before he actually said it. But I was gonna be under arrest if I. Alright.
And then we keep them, and we keep them until they're laid in.
Alright, guys. I think I'm gonna get out of here. Hey, we gonna get out of here, guys?
Huh?
We gonna get out of here?
I don't know, we have agendas to push.
Agenda?
We have four people to make for.
Okay.
We wanna take from people that work.
Is that still going on now? Yeah.
Why not?
Is that what they're doing in there? Is it still going?
Well, damn, I was only saying it for them, I didn't know I was saying it for the camera.
I don't have to post. I put a case, uh, dude hit a rocket, it blew a hole through the case.
Oh, man.
So, I had to put a new case on this, uh.
Had to take a whole thing apart to do this shit.
Yeah, yeah.
Street bike?
Uh, no, it's this.
Okay.
So, I got, I received it taken apart, like the motor was already out, and so I had to take it apart and put it all back together, but got it up and going.
Cool.
They lost the motor mount bolt, so there's no motor mount bolt.
Oh, no.
So, gotta get those ordered up.
So, sorry, maybe I was, maybe I was, sorry, we're being. It's just a post on the internet. We wanna make sure the agendas are published for every, everyone to see, so we can all get in on it, so we can all help out.
Take them the working man.
What's the secret? Bro, they were being filmed before they realized they were being filmed. There's mics and cameras everywhere. They don't even realize there's a mic behind that pole right there. And that the zoom on this can see every eyelash. Silly commies. They don't know how this, uh, this camera equipment built by capitalism works.
Is that a dude or a chick?
Yep.
Yep. Good citizen media, welcome in.
Oh, shit, still live over there?
Yep.
You didn't catch all that foul shit I just said, did you?
No, I was back here.
That was awesome, though. You know, I, I always have fun when I go with you, whether it's going on the racetrack. Or getting guns pulled on us, or.
I don't think we, or you didn't kinda, whatever.
He pulled his gun.
You can call it pulled.
He did.
Look, man, if you were I.
Should've took it to the men.
If you or I had a gun in our hand, walking up to a cop, we'd be dead. They would say they pulled, he pulled a gun on me.
Without, without the holster?
Yep. The only reason to take a gun out of a holster is to shoot.
I agree.
That's why I hate it when people like HBO Mac come up and they're like, hey, you wanna check out my gun? And wave it all around and flag you and. And I'm like, nah, actually, I don't, I don't wanna see your gun, fucking retard, why are you wearing it like on basketball shorts? That thing is gonna fall any moment.
I'm sorry HBO Matt, I'm sorry HBO Matt that he said that about you.
It wasn't about him, it was about his.
He's not gonna.
I'll look at him all day, I don't.
You in here HBO Matt?
He's, Matt, Matt has never actually done that to me, actually.
Oh, we heard it Cindy Brown.
There's been plenty of people in half.
Cindy Brown says, oh, we heard it.
Yeah, I know.
Cindy Brown said she heard what?
Whatever, she said you didn't hear, she said hell heard it.
I would talk back, but I, I know when. I know what authority isn't, isn't? And I know that if Cindy Brown said something, I need to shut the hell up.
That's right.
Just obey. Dude, I was out with my buddy, I gotta, I gotta show you the video. I was out with my buddy, he's like, hey, man, there's a, there's a cop in the media, and it's illegal to be in the media, so let's go record. Comes and picks me up, the cop's not there, so I'm like, alright, we'll keep driving around, see if we see any others, goes to the Walmart park. And drive up, and he likes to park in the, uh, police.
Only parking.
Yeah, so we pull up and there's somebody, there's a car there, and Emma's recording, and, uh, it has a plate on it, it says Fraternal Order of Police. And he's got his window down, I'm like, oh, those guys are pussies. And we realize the guy walking behind it is the guy.
Right.
The windows are down, and then I was like, oh, that's him, so we see the lights flash on, he backs up a little bit, I go fraternal, F O P, Fraternal Order of Police should be Fraternal Order of Pussies. And he's like, yeah, we're laughing, and he's like, I'm gonna sweep back around, and as he pulls out, I'll pull into the parking spot, so he goes and circles around, the guy pulls out, he pulls in, I'm flipping him off, he's laughing. I'm like, dude, look at this lady on the sidewalk, she's pissed, and I'm like, Emma, zoom in, she's in zone, and he goes, he starts laughing, he goes, that's my wife. And instantly, well, all the shit talks stops, everything stops, oh, like, we'll talk shit to cops, politicians, judges, that's my wife, oh shit, I'm so sorry.
Sorry about that. You're gonna go home and be fucked, buddy.
And I, I've, I've never been shaking so much before on a cop watch, like, oh my god, we're in trouble.
Antagonize the wife. They call that the Lane Myers, I think, is what I heard, it was like. Her ass was his wife.
The Lane Myers.
Lane Myers.
I was like, don't zoom in, don't zoom in, delete that. That, that video will never see the light of day unless he publishes it.
Yeah.
But I can show you, yes.
I like a good laugh, absolutely.
It's good fun. As we're driving away, he was rolling down my window, too, and he's like, dude, I was rolling down your window so you could cuss around.
You were there that night at the Circle K, weren't you? Well, you were on the phone with Lane. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was fucking hilarious, I watched that video about ten times that night.
All the best stuff, man.
Okay, all the best stuff can't be published, that's why I can't be myself around this fucking thing.
I don't know, man, my theory is wait till the statute of limitations, so if there happens to be any crimes, then publish it, and then just let it all out.
He's getting a personal conversation at the door.
Yeah, I held on to that video of me and Bow recording at the polling station because we found out there is a, there's legislate, so I was like, I told Bow, I don't care, I'll hold on to this for seven years. This public shit, bro.
Fuck, yeah.
I did find out there's no punishment, though.
There's no punishment.
No, all they do is tell you you have to live.
Just like, just like in the court, then.
It's not even a fine or a misdemeanor.
You guys wanna see what he's talking about? He ran right back in there.
There's cops sitting there trying to protect the mayor.
He's running from Freeman.
For the video, and that cop keeps running away. Uh, any, any cop?
Sure, dude.
Thank you, I got it.
You good?
Yes, I appreciate it. Brown, Brown, I'm James, thank you, I appreciate it.
That was going.
He keeps running as I try to get a, a video.
Hey, Sax?
It's funny, it's funny.
Is Sax in there?
It's a fun game, dude.
He's not here today?
I haven't seen him.
Sax or Williams?
Nope.
It's because the mayor's not here.
No, they're just, they, they haven't been here for a while.
Oh. That's weird. Yeah, but he used to here, as Williams and Sax are used to here.
I haven't seen him here in quite a while now.
Huh, did I run him off the last time?
Yeah, maybe.
Good. No, the two that I came for is not in there. I didn't ask him about him, I just asked about Sax or Williams.
Brown was chill, he stood still for me so I could get a clear picture for.
His name is spelled Braun, like.
He's obedient, then, right?
Yeah, and that's all I need.
That's it, obedience.
If I'm voluntary compliance, I wouldn't have to shoot the fuck out of people. And I don't wanna have to do that, it's their fault.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if my wife has a hot plate when I get home, I won't have to give her a black eye. And if she doesn't, it's her fault. Your life's gonna be still, aren't you? Hopefully, my wife isn't watching, I don't need a black eye.
Mrs. Freeman, yep, here.
Ain't no ending that one out.
Yep, there she is.
Is she in there?
No.
I wouldn't be surprised.
I don't think so.
She hates watching this stuff, but she follows you guys.
Yeah, that's funny, she won't watch your channel, but she watches ours.
She, uh.
Hey, everybody.
She knows I hate watching this stuff because it's depressing, so she watches you guys to let me know if one of you gets arrested or something.
Well, that's good. This guy snorts Viagra just to get taller. He's setting you up.
Oh, watch behind your head now.
Yep, I know.
Oh, no, I know, I'm well, yeah. I almost caught that on camera, too, why'd you warn him?
I know, I know exactly.
He knows where he's at.
I've never walked into one of these.
Oh, man, that's a beautiful shot, too.
I got him in my yard.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna be in the thumbnail.
You got it in your yard, the area you're in.
Yeah, big balloons on it right now.
Yep. Yep, that's for the seeds.
Yeah, all kinds of bats flying around him lately.
You gotta take it before they do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The seeds.
Oh, yeah.
If not. You can plant, they're seeds.
Oh, sweet.
Smores seeds. You'll, you'll usually get, like, whatever bird will eat it, shit it out, and then there'll be one coming up there. See if that fits in here, nope.
That's your name, man. Here's a sticker, and I need another one, I gotta keep one for myself.
If I had a dollar for every time a lesbian told me I didn't have a chance, I'd go first, probably, I'd drink a brew of wine.
Oh, that's a good one.
Thank you, you seen enough?
I can't remember. That's a lot of words, though, to memorize.
You guys getting ready to get out of here, Shirley?
So, hypothetically, if you had to pick a guy to disappoint you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't want it muted, we just don't want her to hear, but he's looking up pickup lines, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see if I can get that lesbian's phone number, so he's looking up best pickup lines for a man to pick up a lesbian.
You hear that, Mrs. Freeman, she's gonna bring home a lesbian for you, are you happy?
I know you like women, I just happen to be one emotionally.
Lee was the most compelling.
I like that.
You're into girls, same here, let's bond over that, see where it goes. I like the one, so hypothetically, if I had to pick a guy to disappoint you one last time, would I qualify?
Can we both meet at the Y at the same time?
Yeah. That's it, I'll get more if you want them.
Remember, you remember that, uh, little podcast where there's, there's like some smoking hot chicks sitting on a couch with some really nerdy dude? And, uh, some gamer dude, and they're like, yeah, we hear everything's bigger in Texas, and he's like, hm, I'd love to prove you wrong. And they ate it up, they're like, ooh, I can't believe it, see that tiny little.
I am a jackpot, says Freeman wants the gargle bow.
Mostly, mostly boots, though.
I am a jackpot.
Is he in here?
Yeah. I just made him a moderator. Again, I took him off before, I think he, I am a jackpot, you're the one that was, uh, doing people for ten seconds, I think, yeah.
I unblocked him, though.
Yeah.
Like a year ago.
Freeman unblocked you, I am a jackpot.
I think it's about that time for me.
Where'd Freeman go? Oh, there, I thought you went. Inside, get more water. You would've walked in there and got kidnapped, and we would've, what the hell, where'd Freeman?
I wanted to wait for the boomer to come back out.
Yeah.
So, I could tell him, you know, you can run your mouth all you want, but you're my bitch, and you, you went through security like I told you. So I could tell him, you know, you can run your mouth all you want, but you're my bitch, and you, you went through security like I told you.
Yeah, my little jogger's about ready to be fucking...
Oops.
Well, no, it's sitting on the ground, motherfucker.
Uh, I just turned it on, but it's 'cause I think they're getting out right now. We, I've been videoing you for like thirty minutes. But the mic was on me way over there, so it was really just waiting for people to come out. I got a, I got a buddy, um, wearing a, uh, actually, they thought it was you, and I was like, "No, it's not him." Um, he talked back to me on the way in there. Were you guys here when I was making everyone line up? How did you sneak past me?
You must've been here first.
Well, when you went in? When did you go in?
Five.
You came in this door, right?
Yeah.
How did you get past me?
We went in here till about five thirty.
So, so, hey, you know what though, can we bond on something that we can all agree on? Fuck Trump. Right? Uh, fu, well, I'm with fuck all government, fuck the left, fuck the right, fuck Biden, fuck Trump, but you know what, I just wanted to bond with you on something first. You want my number? Okay. I've never been with a number.
It's okay too.
What makes you think she's a lesbian?
Well, I agree.
Did you hear what they said? They was talking, I didn't hear what they said.
Did you not see her? He doesn't think you're a...
I don't know, yeah. She's with you, oh no, she's...
I wasn't talking to her anyways, I was talking to the guy in the back of my shirt.
He's a lesbian? I'm a lesbian too. He walked over there, you should walk down there Freeman.
How did they sneak past me? The socialists would've lined right up. And they would've given me their money.
Before we got here. We didn't walk up here till...
Don't worry, I'm gonna redistribute it the best way possible, just give it all to me. Stupid motherfuckers, filet mignon for everybody on me.
Fuck yeah, game with that.
That's the way it's always worked.
That's government.
That's socialism.
One side to the other side, that makes that, that makes it, that makes it, for the other side, and the other side did the same fucking thing that one side did.
Freeman is always looking for gays.
And lesbians.
I'm a jackpot says.
And lesbians. Lisa, I wouldn't have given her a real number anyways, I would've told her that the area code was nine eleven. I didn't really wanna give her my number, I just wanted to see if she would take it.
Well, I'm gonna get the fuck out of here, it's time for me to roll.
Alright.
Hey, good to meet you as well, man. Be safe out there.
Yeah.
It's like Mount Liman, right?
Yeah, I'm over there at the bottom of Mount Liman.
Fuck yeah.
Yeah, uh, I'm a mobile motorcycle mechanic, and I, I live seasonally in Alaska, so I'm about to take off at the end of this month till about Halloween, and I'll be back.
Yeah.
Get out of the heat.
Good shit, man.
Look at that, we dispersed the democratic function.
We got one left laying on the bench up there. Went over here, few over there, one up there, yup, two, two, there's a couple left. Those ones aren't going home though, I think they are home.
We should teach them more about socialism, what happens with socialism?
If you was a real Alaska, you would come here in the summer and burn your ass off, and you'd go there in the winter, freeze. A backwards, a backwards...
Backwards snowbird, firebird.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. You sure you're making the right choices there?
There's some motherfuckers you don't wanna hang out with.
You're either gonna roast or freeze.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
'Cause in the winter, you could get like sixty below, right?
Yeah, it gets a bit cold out there.
The night, in December twenty second nineteen eighty, uh, eighty-three, I pulled into Great Falls, Montana. And, uh, it was, uh, sixty below zero for a week.
Holy shit.
It was set in record lows, looking it up, and I thought it was like, I couldn't, I had an eighty-two Silverado, I couldn't shut it off, 'cause I had no block heater.
Oh yeah, it froze up.
Yep, I had to leave it running all night, and then drive it into the hobby shop the next morning and put in a block heater.
Below, that's wild, that never even, instant fatality for me.
Yep, for a week's on.
This is a little, um, baby moose that I found out there in Alaska, let's see. And, uh, it was looking for its mom, and it was real kinda stressed out. And, uh, so I went and, uh, here's what I, I fucked up doing, I tried to help it find its mom.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, not knowing better, all my friends from Alaska were like, "Dude, you dumbass."
Yeah.
Moose kill more people every year than bears do, and so I'm over here, it's walking with me, following me around like a dog, and, uh, Never found its mom, but it did, it did get back home though, or I guess back to where it was going.
Oh, that's cool as shit.
Yeah, just a little baby guy. And then, uh, yeah, just followed me around like that, and then eventually we were walking long enough, and saw a spot that it recognized, and it took off, jumped into the bushes.
Alrighty guys, I'm gonna get out of here.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Get a rope.
I had a chorizo moose once, but it was, no, it was a black bear.
Get a rope. Guys, ready to go? Oh, I got ninety-five people in here watching.
That's a lot of meat.
They give me all kinds of moose meat, like ground up meat, moose steaks.
Good stuff, yeah.
Ask how he knows Sam Allen.
Yeah, yeah. Out there where I'm at, they do a lot of fishing, so we get like, you know, halibut caught, like the fresh shit. And, uh, it's pretty good, but, um, they also eat, we have like a lot of bears and stuff out there, brown bears and black bears, and they'll eat those too, but it's kinda like how javelinos are here.
WB ball fifteen. You're now blue.
Kinda not that gray, yeah.
Trying to go back and see if anyone's not a moderator.
From Arizona is, out there, there's just wild, uh...
Think I got everybody.
Uh, here the roads don't have ditches, there the roads have ditches, and in the summer they'll fill up with strawberries, and then those'll go away, and then blueberries will come in, and then, um, carrots too, good carrots, they'll be carrots too, everywhere. All you want, all you can want, yeah.
In Alaska?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's a spot that I go to anyways, and it's called Haynes, it's right outside of Juneau, southeast Alaska, and, uh, it's less than two thousand people, I, I... It's a lot like Disney in size and, uh, population, and, uh, so it's also kind of a resource desert, there's no like Walmart or anything like that, it's, you know, everything comes in on its own, and, uh, But the nature there is badass, there's all kinds of like fish, and, well, where I'm at is the second deepest fjord on earth, uh, which is twenty-one hundred feet deep, so we get big ass whales, dolphins, uh, All kinds of big sea life like that, even the big, big whales, and, uh,
Good shit.
Get those out there all the time, and then the salmon come through, and what's cool?
Calm chaos. You're now a moderator.
Saltwater of the ocean and the freshwater of the melted snow don't mix.
Calm chaos.
So from the sky, it makes all these cool patterns and colors and stuff.
Direct douche.
Yeah, it's cool, and, uh, the, there's a gold mining TV show out there called Gold Rush, White Water, and so I'm their only mechanic, they have, uh, They use side by sides to get around like way out in the back country, and they, they were like, "What, you, you wo, you work on these?" And I was like, "It's all I work on," and they're like, "Give you some mon, some money," and, uh,
Winston Smith, welcome in.
The machines to me to work on, and then they moved their camp so far out that, uh, instead they took me out to the campsite on a helicopter, which was pretty dope, I could do helicopter rides all summer.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, I'll show you a picture.
Say something, anyone that wants to be a moderator, you gotta say something so I can see you.
I'm fifty-one, fifty, famous on there.
Yep, I made you a moderator today.
Thank you.
Yep, say something, you should see.
Uh, okay, I'll pull it up.
Say something right now, if not, I'll make you one right now, 'cause I, I remember seeing that earlier.
Yeah, that's me.
I'm sure I got you. You drove here in a car, right, or not a motorcycle?
Uh, yeah, I drove my truck.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a long way.
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm right above the vigilance committee.
Yep, yep, you're blue. There you go. Alright. The vigilance committee, thank you. Tell James that Bow wants out of the trunk of his car. Okay, I'll tell him. Bow wants out. Don't shoot!
Uh, so, this is one that I just put the tracks on, so like in the...
Oh, that is for them.
Beginning of the season, they're on tracks, and then later when the snow melts, they're back on tires, but they have a fleet of these in, uh, in service.
Badass.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Hardest tracks, I fucking love them a lot.
For the application, they work really well, but like if you, if you didn't need them, they fucking, they're hard, they ride really harsh.
Right, right.
So if you weren't on like mud or something like that, then, uh, it, it's a pain in the dick, but if you're in soft stuff, you're there great.
Damn it, man, welcome.
Yeah, yeah, this is, uh, one of the other ones. This one's had a hard life, it's been your...
Damn it, man! You didn't give me time, now, now say something, damn it, man.
Fuck they out there with that, uh, mining light, huh?
Yeah, so the gold miners themselves...
Damn it, man!
Run around on, and, uh...
There you are, damn it, man.
Themselves, we're like, "Shit, you're actually pretty good at what you do, you wanna work on our airboats."
You're blue.
Okay, so, uh, I had never...
You have rights, so good to see you too.
Testing it, uh, I blew up a guy riding a bicycle on accident, I was, the airboat was on a trailer with the moon behind it, and I'm going... Poor fuck on a bike, just going through, he caught the airstream, got knocked through.
Did you see you guys?
Uh, no, he was, he... Yeah, it was no big deal.
That's fucking cool.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, so that's the lake, that's just by my house, I put some, uh, jet, got some jet skis out there. Which crazy, it's cold enough to see your breath, but it's like, I mean, it's... Yeah, it's weird over there, it's pretty much always fifty degrees.
Toe Ted, you need a ride? Alright. What's that? I don't think anyone is there. Constitutional rights.
Yeah, yeah. Too funny. Yeah, get him, get him.
Yep.
Get down.
He's coming! He's coming! Get down! Oh, okay, yeah, good flavor. Which one do you like?
I do, uh, truthfully.
I would want to stay at truthfully, please, baby.
Yeah, the distance is shit, I put it in there, I bought it, the color already full, you just put it in there, it starts...
Yeah.
It's already in there. I don't like that.
There's still people in there?
Yeah.
Shit.
Give her, give her a go.
The tribe, welcome in. Yep, free Lane Myers.
See, I'm gonna go back to Sig, because the vapors fucking my brain up in the way that I used to like the one that tasted kinda like bacon.
Alright guys, I'm gonna get out of here. Last chance, anybody that needs a moderator, better say something quick.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those are cool, 'cause you don't gotta, you know, light it or...
Later, everybody.